So we have a resolution for the fire department. We'll wait to get done with all of the department reports and then address this resolution. So the next one is sheriff's department. Captain please.
Sure, trustee.
I'm sorry. Yes, hold on just a minute.
Could you do, there was another right to resolution to help about?
We're going to do that now or I'm going to do it after the department reports?
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Captain.
All right, a lot of the stats are still pending just because of the short turnaround between November and December, but what we do have here, 31 alarm calls, we had 14 animal complaints in the township. I did meet with Lark this afternoon to discuss a couple of the addresses in the township that we're going to be, that we've had multiple calls to, so we're going to be working on a couple of those locations together. Four breaking in, area three burglaries. We had five drug complaints called in via dispatch. We had no, no calls or tips that came in via Crime Stoppers for that, but just a reminder that if you guys do want to call something in, remain anonymous, that is where we receive our complaints from now. We had three dumping complaints in the township for the month of November, 15 mental health-related calls, 34 peace officer requests, we had one robbery to an individual, 39 suspicious subjects, situations, or vehicles, and 22 welfare checks. Over December of last year, our crime's down 36%. Part one violent crimes are down 45%. Part one property, down 40. Part two violent crimes, down 16. And crimes against society, down 51%. We had six crashes in Jefferson during November. That's a decrease of four crashes, 40% over this time in 2019. Two were minor injuries, four were property damage. None of the crashes were OBI. And three of the crashes involved hit and run. We had an aggravated burglary that occurred yesterday on Cherokee. A subject posed as a employee of the gas company and was granted entry to the residence. Suspect then robbed the homeowner at gunpoint, but there were no injuries. That's being handled by special investigations. Environmental crimes generated three new cases for illegal dumping in Jefferson Township during November. And then we had three cases that were solved and sent to the prosecutor's office for charges. We had no roadways cleaned due to the inmate worker program being suspended. I'm starting this past week here Thanksgiving and running through the end of, well, into the first of the new year, we're going to have extra traffic enforcement throughout the township and throughout the county, through the federal and state dollars that are provided to us through the high visibility enforcement program. So we will be, you know, out with designated traffic patrol. The forensic services and the traffic services unit, which is stationed here at District Seven, Traffic Services is our, it's not traffic enforcement, but it's our reconstruction that responds to serious injury crashes and stuff. We've got, the sheriff repurposed a very low mileage vehicle, used to be the VSS A5. It was out here in this lot for the outlaw's funeral, had the big camera on the top of it and everything. He's, that's been, that's good, that's in the process of being turned into a forensic response truck. And it's going to allow us the ability to bring it to prime scenes, crash scenes, we'll have generators onboard, we'll have lighting onboard that will be able to illuminate the scenes. It'll be equipped with evidence supplies, extra cameras, batteries, radios. And they'll have a couple of different areas where they can work out of the weather. If it's cold out, they can get in and warm up and stuff. So it's going to be a good piece of equipment for us because right now it's back to the cruiser if you want to warm up and back out into it, but this'll, this'll actually give us the room and the ability to do some work within the vehicle that normally we would do with the vehicle, the trunk of the car or something. So we're excited about that. It's a, it's about a 40-foot-long vehicle, so it's, you know, it's going to be a nice addition. But that's all that I have. Just an update on a couple of citizen complaints. Working with code enforcement zoning on the Altrum Road address to continue to address some of those issues there. And then I spoke with Lark about that location today as well. And then over on Bluecrest where they're running the kitchen, we did, we did stop by to talk to that individual the other week. Sounds like that they are relocating, going to move to another area due to some employment issues or whatever. So hopefully, I've talked to her back and forth, complaining on that via email a couple times. We went out there and did some enforcement on a trailer parked on the street without some tags that was kind of blocking the roadway through there, but we're thinking that's going to come to a resolution here soon. So, and that's all I have.
Mr. McGuire. I want to say that we appreciate working with the sheriff's department. We had another incident this afternoon. They've got a fantastic group of people and anytime they need our help, we're here for them. Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, my station report.
You have your seven-page report to review after tonight's meeting, trustees. As you can tell, a lot of hours have been put into this last month trying to get the budgets ready. All of our meetings that you guys kindly came to helps a lot because you get to see and ask questions and input and it works shock setting and there's no question that you can't answer. This township's getting better. Since I started four years ago, the finances are improving. Not so much about new money, although there's been great levies passed by the citizens that live here and you can't, you can't replace that. But it's the actual accounting of the money itself. Knowing that you put the right items and the right amounts in the right categories instead of having to do multiple transfers is a sign that you've budgeted as best as you can. Some first couple of years here, we were doing a boatload of transfers and accounts because for whatever reason, that's the condition your books were in. As you look through the rest of these documents and you meet at the next meeting, understand that a lot of hours and energy and a lot of people have had input to these numbers. You're not always going to agree with those numbers, you're not going to like some of them, or you might love them or wonder why. There's not more in that line item, but realize that we have to get this done. And in years past, we've delayed it and gone to temporary budgets and all the way through April. And when you have very little money to operate off of, as department managers, you want to know definite that I have this money and this is all I can live under instead of floating it for three to four months. The other thing is, and Tracy, I'm so glad she set a date, we get all the invoices in, we're going to have to understand that anything after the 15th, we're going to have to talk to our vendors and say, you're going to have to wait till January for a payment. And, you know, because in the past, invoices would show up in April or March or April from the previous year and it's not in the budget. So, so a lot of hours have gone into this. The CARES Act, the hours that the fire department and I have spent is ignocient trying to get vendors, trying to find out what prices are. We're very thankful for what you did for us tonight of signing the invoices to follow up with the resolution that you passed on the 24th. The residents are going to be protected when they come into your buildings, when they open up. So outside of that, I'm proud of the staff. I'm proud of what these folks have all done from, you know, Chief to even Tracy working very hard with us. It takes a team. And we're coming to the close of the year. Let's try to make a commitment that we're going to work more as a team in the new year because today is the last first meeting of the month. And we've got a lot of work to do, as Tracy alluded to, for the rest of the month. But we've got to turn that corner in January and be ready to be a stronger team together. And I'm here to work as hard as I can for you guys. So that's the end of my report.
Okay. Before we go to comments by citizens as to this last resolution, resolution number 20-116, authorizing the purchase of a used 2010 Ford Crown Victoria police interceptor sedan with emergency lights and sire package. The total expenditure to acquire the vehicle and equipment is not to exceed $9,000. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 20-116.
I'll second the motion.
We have motion on the floor to adopt resolution 20-116. Any questions?
We need to read into the record the owner of this vehicle. I need it very clear to the public where this car is coming from.
Ace City Software Company of Dayton, Ohio.
And who owns that company?
It says, it says in there.
This is Mr. Wilcox's car.
It's a company vehicle, nothing but a cabin.
Who's the check get that to?
I don't know. I presume Ace, Ace City Software Company of Dayton. Can we roll call please, Tracy?
Trustee McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Epstein.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Should we do you have a line item to give to say where this $9,000 is coming from? So she can cut the check right away.
Okay, next is comments by citizens. And we have two of them. First one is the Mr. Marvin Gettart. Do you have the floor, Marvin?
Being you don't have anything to do, I don't want to give you something to do, okay?
Okay.
I've got a few things written down here. First of all, Mr. Wolf and I, this is the site I'm going to talk about, we've got some trees that are real danger and it's a serious problem. I've got, I went back and found the resolution 17-0666 that in the 20th of June of 2017, I was signed. I'm going to give you guys a copy of all of this so you've got something to look at. But Marvin, as you Wolf said, I need a survey. I've got a survey, I've got it all identified where the property lines are. Mark Webber has prepared a 15-page document that you guys will, I will give you tonight and you can read it and I'll give you an idea of what's going on. My renter before, I lost her car, totaled her car on a tree thorn. And there's eight more of them that's ready to go. They're dead ass trees, it's not an act of God, it's, and Webber's already explained that to you. I gave her $1,500, but she goes to school, she was 22-years-old, she goes to school and she's working part-time. She's moved because of the danger she's afraid of. She had a little baby she's afraid of. I had a review Monday, yesterday, and it really shocked me with all state insurance and they refused to give me insurance now for a property of 7710 Hill Road because of the danger. And they had to put her right on the policy and I have to agree to that, that they're not responsible for any damage, bodily injury, or any liability. Now, that's not going to work, so I need you guys' help as to where I go and how I handle this. I talked to my attorney and he said it's up to the township trustees, it's in your hands. I'm going to let you look at all of this and you can make a decision and let me know. My renter now, he's a K-9 police officer. He's got a brand cruiser, he's a K-9 guy. The cruiser costs a lot of money. He's got to sit outside, the trees will hit, they'll come down, we'll hit the cruiser. He's got a truck, a motorcycle, and a lawnmower in the garage, and he's got a pickup truck sitting outside. And he's quite concerned about the damage that's going to happen. My problem is, we can probably handle the bodily damage, but what about bodily injury? Once somebody gets permanent injury, they'll appeal from the tree thorn. Who's responsible? And the guy that owns the land above the house, is Mr. Wolf, are you the code enforcement?
No.
No? Who's the code enforcement officer?
Tony Keane.
Who?
Tony Keane.
Tony McKeane.
Okay. But I think he's going to have to go and talk to Carlos Jewel, the owner of the property that's got the trees, and see once maybe he might just be nice and want to get the trees removed. I haven't had any luck with it. I offered 10 years ago, eight years ago, to go and have with him and he said, these are my trees, you're not touching them, okay? Now they're his trees. Now they're dead. That's all documented and I'm going to give you all documents. So do you get with Tony Keane or do I get with him to come out and check it? What is my, my next step?
Your trustees?
Whatever your trustees give me the directive to do. Only because you have to follow the legal steps as Mr. Wolf, he's explained.
Maybe, did you have anything else to add to our visit?
Well, they're obviously dead.
Yeah. I mean, it is a danger and it's a, it's a hazard that's going to happen. It's not something that is an act of God. They're already determined to be dead.
The struggles that townships have, and I'm sharing with you, it's some OTA, Ohio Township Association problems, is Mr. Gettart's problem is all over the township, all over each township in Ohio. The only enforcement you have from a township standpoint is go in there, but you have to have legal right to enter and then, like you do when you do a nuisance property, and then you've got to go in and cut them down at your expense as a township and put it on the taxes of the homeowners. The struggle that all the townships has is, where are you going to come up with the money for 50 property owners, not one? But the problem is severe.
We agree.
That's the struggle that the state of Ohio doesn't, and the townships don't know what to do.
When do you get your money, like it's put on the taxes? When does the township get their money back?
If they pay it. Any assessments can be not paid.
Pay it out loud.
I know. They can sit on the property till the day the property sells.
You mean, he can not pay his taxes or?
He pays his regular taxes, but he doesn't have to pay the assessment. So we have many properties that get assessed.
So who's responsible for the death or the injury to the property?
It may be the property owner.
You've seen that, right?
Yeah, 100%. And I'm explaining why. A tree fell on a paramedic in Clayton, Ohio and killed a young lady some years ago and it was a dead tree, been dead three years. And they were out checking the fire hydrants, they were testing them on a sunny day, and that tree just decided to fall and it crushed her or a partner and the ambulance medic. The homeowner, because it was dead and noticeably dead and reported dead, was 100% responsible for the tree that fell in and hurt that person. The key point for you trustees to think about is, regardless of who's responsible, it's a, a problem. Someone's going to get hurt.
Oh, yeah, right.
But you also got to look at the fact of what precedence you set. Because how are you going to come up with enough money to get trees all over the township cut? And that's not an excuse, I'm saying, but that is your decision.
What if I would decide to pay for the cost of the tree removal myself rather than the township? Would you have a big right to go in and enforce it?
I don't know that question. We have to ask legal. I don't know.
And you can get it, estimate.
Right.
What we're going to do, what I'd say we do, the eight trees that are identified, I don't think we have to cut them down and cut the wood up and all that. Knock the trees down so they don't fall over and not properly.
Right. I was worried if they fall on us while we sat down there in the car.
But Mark Webber said that there's seven, 7,000-pound trees, they're 50 feet tall, they're going to hit that and it's going to be $60,000, $70,000, $80,000.
What would you say, they're about 20 feet from the house, right?
Yeah, right, 15, 20 feet.
Well, we can check with legal trustees and if he can donate the money, he might take care of the financial problem.
I'm looking at, I'd say $500 a tree. You go up there with a bucket truck and you start cutting down, don't worry about cutting the wood, he don't care, I don't care.
Just drop them. Just drop them. Well, you, if you're involved, you'll definitely be there.
Even if he's contacted in his interest of them.
Pardon me?
You know if he is contacted in his interest of them. There's a liability there.
Well, on the ground, I've got the car totaled.
Yes.
He said he didn't have insurance. His wife is an executive of a president of a big insurance company, so they know the rules. She still hadn't gotten any, anything out of that car yet, still nothing. She moved, still, you know, I gave her $1,500, I gave her too much rent free, trying to help her. Maybe Tony could go to the guy and maybe Tony could talk to the guy and he'd be nice and say, I'll remove the tree if he shows him what I'm going to give you guys tonight. Because the document that Webber put up, it's a 15-page document and it identifies, Mr. Wolf's got one, and that's really the key.
Oh, thank you. Some insurance companies will pay for it.
Sorry, man?
I've been involved in it, some insurance companies will pay for it.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I've got it here, I'm going to give each one of you one.
Legal.
Mr. Wolf's got one. But I need some help as to what direction I go, because something serious is going to happen probably pretty quick. Give you something to do, okay?
Yeah.
It's Christmas time. Merry Christmas.
Thanks.
And you can read all of that. Do you have, you don't need the one with the resolution, right?
No.
Okay, that's better information. Okay, I thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Rodney Crawford, senior pastor. What's heard?
Thank you, trustee, trustee of Jefferson Township. My name is Rodney Crandmore and I pass to the First Baptist Church of Ridgewood Heights in Dayton, Ohio, in Jefferson Township, 116 Hannahware Avenue. And what we are proposing to the township is to direct a digital sign. And the zoning board had got back with the sign company and the sign company got back with me saying that they didn't really have any regulations for a digital sign or anything like that and wasn't sure whether or not that could be done. I just wanted to, just to come by and let you, give you a couple of copies of what the sign looks like. We only have, we only have two neighbors on the side of the church where the sign is going to be and they're, they don't have any problem with it. The sign is not going to be facing their homes, it's going to be facing in the opposite direction as the street flows. We're looking at one-sided right now because at the end of Hannahware Avenue, it's a dead end, people just have to turn around. So we're only looking at people seeing the sign coming this way. The sign is of such, to where it's going to add beautification, you know, to our neighborhood there, it gives them information and of course it, it's kind of like a draw to the church, if you will. We also, I also asked the sign company about the illumination of the digital. And at nighttime, there is, there's barely any illumination because it's going to be in like a LED red color. So there's no light going out that's going to illuminate anything around there if neighbors have any problem with lighting and things like that. And we just believe that it would be an enhancement to Jefferson Township. And to those of you on the, I see Mr. Mann and I've heard of Mr. Wolf, who, since I've been there at the church, 108 years now, we have done our best to do what we call like a clean sweep, a sweep in our neighborhood. We do, we try to do that every year. This year we weren't able to do it because of COVID and things like that, but we try to clean up everything and we asked our neighbors there around us to do the same thing. So we try to keep everything looking nice and unified at church and we just think this would just be an enhancement to the neighborhood. And so we're asking you guys to consider allowing us to put a digital sign up there. And I do have copies for, for the trustees, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Happy birthday, by the way, to your church.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. It's not, it's not a large sign. It's only, I think, 72, 72 inches high and it can be smaller, it has to be smaller. We just wanted to kind of be the leader, if you will, in the neighborhood of beautification. And that's all that I have.
Okay. So next is trustee reports, I'm first. I don't have too much to say. I was laid up for a little while, I was in the hospital, was feeling very good, so I didn't get a lot done and then I'm back at it. Jim, you're next.
Trustees, these meetings are getting extremely silly. We're taking four or five meetings for basic decisions that should sail through in seconds. I'm sick and tired of the way that fiscal officer, the new trustee McGlaughlin, abused the administrator and do everything in their power to fight his ability to do the job. Classic tonight, the discussion with credit cards and being able to pay for a copier that needs to go back. We paid an attorney to get rid of this thing. We've got employees that can't buy toilet paper. Other departments have credit cards and can spend whenever they want. My question to you is, are we going to treat our employees equal or is it just whoever friends with you gets all the benefits? If you've got a problem with Mr. Wolf, then you need to follow the handbook and write The debate on minutes tonight has to do with the fact that the township has several pieces of litigation going on. One of them is McGlaughlin versus Jefferson Township. He's suing me and Mr. Mann. So the record needs to be straight. How he's handled the meetings. Anybody familiar with parliamentary procedure, he didn't follow that, he didn't even time the speakers tonight. Marvin, you need to read your address into the record before you leave. An hour later. Go ahead now. Marvin Gettart, 8291 Hannahware Road. This is getting crazy. And you even said yourself in the last meeting, Mr. McGlaughlin, that we're not going to pass any levies with the way that this is going on. You know, we're the last to get things done because we can't make simple decisions in the meetings. The execution is very poor. The problems we had with the budget tonight is the same thing that we go through every single year. And it'll probably take an emergency meeting to finalize it because you and Tracy are going to fight this tooth and nail. So that's all I have.
Mr. Mann, you're next.
To the residents, I just want to say I'm sorry about everything that's going on right now, but you cannot control everything. But the only thing I hope that we can get things together and have a good meeting and hopefully we've come out better. The only other thing I want to tell you is the virus is still around. A lot of people aren't going to be here from the first of the year. Now, the guys say it, most people or a lot of the governors have said, take it easy and don't be traveling. But you see how many people talk out for the holidays to go see their parents or something. their parents or some of the kids of the family, and this is causing nothing but a problem, but you get all the people that worked in the hospital, I have a problem. It's caused a bunch of problems, and that's where we are. So if you don't have to travel, stay home. We'll see you on the fifteenth, and then hopefully we'll see you at Mercy, so everybody have a nice evening, and hopefully our next meeting, things will go better. So have a nice evening.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Meeting's over at eight thirty-seven.
Steve, was there anything else in there?
Yeah, there's a couple things we've got to do, but I, I.